And three, two, one.
Good morning and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for Wednesday, December 16th, 2020. The topic today is Jazzcom Retail Pet Sales Ordinance, and that Jazzcom is the Joint Animal Services Committee. If you'd like to join in, not for public comment, but to listen, the phone number is 360-252-9020, and the PIN number is 1234. I'm Commissioner John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board. Also present is Vice Chair Commissioner Ty Mensah. We also have County Manager Romero Chavez. Commissioner Edwards will be a bit tardy, but we have Robin Courts in his stead, his Executive aide. And we also have Jazzcom Director, Animal Services Director Sarah Hock with us as well. And we have the Assistant County Manager, Robin Campbell, joining. So with that, I'm going to turn to Romero for the frame.
Thank you, and good morning. Thank you very much. Thank you, Sarah, for joining us this morning. This is a follow-up. As you may recall, maybe four weeks ago, you received a letter from the Jazzcom Board urging the Board of County Commissioners to pass a resolution ordinance, I believe prohibiting the sale of pets that are coming from puppy mills. During that conversation, as you may recall, in that letter, they didn't have enough information, at least what I recall based on my notes, to understand what is the issue that perhaps needed to be resolved under this ordinance. And we also provided a perspective of the City of Olympia enacted an ordinance as such. I am not aware the cities of Lacey or Tamwater are in the process or not to consider a similar ordinance, so I cannot report on that at this point. So also during that conversation, I think it was as opposed for me to be the middleman and trying to get additional information from the expert, Sarah, we asked, and she was very kindly to join us this morning to just walk us through what the proposal could be, what is the benefits, and perhaps the opportunities and the risks, and for you to ask her directly any questions that you may have. That's the framework.
Okay, so is this going to... Do you have anything to say, Ty, regarding this? Since you said on that committee, are we going to go right to Sarah?
Well, this might be partly for Sarah. We had a conversation. It took a while before the Jazzcom. So I didn't know anything about this issue, and then I learned about it on the Jazzcom Board, and I was sort of swayed that it was maybe a good step. And then it took like months and months, pandemic months, which are like, you know, each one's worth like 12, before it actually got back to the Board. So when it finally got to the Board and the Board, my seatmates had questions, I just, I didn't, no longer had the grasp of detail as to why I was convinced and what some of the answers were. So that's why it was suggested that we just haul Sarah in here to answer directly, because my memory had faded to, on the detail.
Okay, so Sarah.
All right. To answer one of the questions that Romero brought up, the cities of Tamwater and Lacey are considering similar ordinances. I spoke with Tamwater's Public Safety Committee last week in regards to it, and they're going to bring forth an ordinance as well. And I'm set to discuss it with the City of Lacey next week regarding the same ordinance. The reason why it's so important that all the jurisdictions, you know, present a united front with something like this is so that, you know, a pet store who does sell puppies from a puppy mill cannot, basically cannot sell puppy mill dogs within the county. And so Olympia took the first steps after unfortunately Puppy World moved into the City of Olympia. And Puppy World is known for, one, its predatory lending practices. So they do high, extremely high interest rates loan, interest rate loans to purchase puppies if one cannot afford it. On top of the fact that national organizations like Bailing Out Benji and the Humane Society of the United States have already tracked that over 600 puppies have actually come from known puppy mills in the Midwest that were sold through that store. Some of the issues around puppy mills are that it's not a humane place for animals to be held, let alone bred. Females can be bred as early as six months of age. Again, they never have to leave their kennel. The information that I gave you that shows the size chart of what the mandatory size of a kennel is, so six inches more than the measured body. Basically, they just need to be big enough to spin around and lay down, and that's it. Females are consecutively bred, and there's also no regard for breed health or chronic issues that come from repetitive breeding. So there is no guarantee that, you know, customers, your constituents, are getting a healthy puppy from one of those stores. And on top of that, most likely, they have taken out a high-interest loan to purchase a puppy that has no guarantee of any health or behavioral issues, birth hereditary defects such as heart, cancer, hip dysplasia. There's also been several reports of different types of bacteria that are also contagious to people, so it's a zoonotic disease, that come from these stores as well. And so that is one of the main issues. The other, you know, the other point that I would like to bring up is currently this ordinance would not affect any businesses in unincorporated Thurston County. So this is a preemptive ordinance, so to speak, whereas Olympia was a reactive ordinance to something coming in. This would just prohibit a store such as Puppy World coming into unincorporated Thurston County. It's not affecting anybody's business currently. And the other thing for the commissioners to consider is that having this ordinance does not take away consumer choice. Reputable breeders sell directly to the public, and they do not do it through brokers or through pet stores or online. Most reputable breeders also belong to their local breed club or the AKC Breed Club, in which there is a code of ethics. And one of the code of, points of the code of ethics is that you do not sell your puppies in pet stores. That is part of their code of ethics. Reputable breeders also ensure the continuity of the breed, that there is no defects, health defects, behavior defects. Part of their code of ethics is to trace lineage so that consumers and constituents know that what they are purchasing from a reputable breeder, they know the whole lineage, lineage, as well as any health concerns upfront. So that is one of the, that's, you know, one of the other things to consider as well. And also something to keep in mind, pet stores such as Puppy World is not a successful retail model. Most of the successful retail models that have gone national, like Petco and PetSmart, from the very beginning, they did not sell puppies or kittens in their stores. They had always chose to promote adoption through their stores. One of our local pet supply places, such as Mud Bay, does not. Pet Works, which is owned locally, does not sell animals within their store because the supplies in and of itself for people's pets is a more lucrative retail endeavor than the actual selling of the animal. So that is something else to consider. It's also not in the best interest of the animals of Thurston County. And I would also like to point out that it's something that your constituents don't want to see in their community. The moment Puppy World, you know, opened in Olympia, there was uninterrupted protests outside the stores and people going to city council meetings protesting the fact that Puppy Mill, that Puppy World was there. Because it's not, it's not a store that the community wants to have here. It's not something that they want to support. My understanding is that years ago, there was another retail store that was very similar that had to close its doors because the community did not want it there. So I think that is something for the commissioners to consider as well. With that, I would like to open it up to questions so that I can answer any, any concerns that the commissioners might have, or just questions that perhaps need a little more elaboration on as well.
I will turn to my seatmates momentarily. I would think one of the main questions that I have would be, I would like to avoid government picking winners and losers when it comes to private sector, who can come in, who cannot come in. So with that, I love the, what you said, Sarah, about preemptive strike against puppy mills coming into the county if they're fleeing the cities sans any ordinance. So my question is, how do we verify a puppy mill? I mean, I would know one if I smelled one. But how do you tell a puppy mill, how do we vet that? Who does the vetting? How do you vet a legitimate business from one that wants, that's a puppy mill that's hiring to set up a practice?
Right. And so, you know, the big key thing here is, is that any pet store who is wanting to sell puppies and kittens within their store is getting them from a puppy mill. You know, previously mentioned, if they are a reputable breeder, they're not going to be selling those pets, those dogs, those kittens, in a storefront, because they want to make sure that those, those animals are going to a responsible owner. I mean, I would argue that, you know, a reputable breeder is more discerning than most animal shelters and rescues out there as far as who the, who their pets are going to. And they also have a return guarantee. So again, with a pet store, there is no, there is no guarantee, there is no return if your puppy doesn't work out, and then the constituent is still stuck paying this high-interest rate loan on a dog they no longer even have because it didn't work out.
The PetSmart and Petco, they, they adopt out animals, they're not selling them?
They, correct. So they, they will contract with, it's not a contract. I'm trying to find the best way to describe it, because I used to do all of that for PetSmart. So I have that backend too. I worked for PetSmart charities. And what there is, is that there is an agreement between as many rescues or shelters as PetSmart or Petco would like to have in their stores. And that shelter supplies the pets, but PetSmart and Petco don't make any money off of the sale. And that's, again, one of those key distinctions, is that there is no money being made off of that adoption. That adoption fee is going directly back to, to the shelter or rescue. Because PetSmart and Petco, where they have it down is that they've learned that the retail sale associated with that adoption, the collars, the food, all of the supplies, the cute sweaters, all of that is more lucrative and a better business model than collecting the revenues from the sale of the pet.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mensah, question, comments?
Yeah, Sarah, two questions. One is, so the ordinance itself is not sitting here in front of me. And so is the structure of the ordinance, I would imagine, based on what you said, and my recollection, it's not, it's simply saying that, it's not telling a business they can or can't exist. It's saying, it's, it's regulating an activity within a business. So start whatever business you want, but you're not going to be able to sell puppies in your storefront. Is that...
Correct. And if I remember the Olympia ordinance correctly, it's more about, I think there's very specific language in there about that the pet store cannot receive revenue or monetary funds from that adoption. And so that's one of those, like, it's not a sale. They cannot collect money off of an animal that is being, I don't, I don't, because I don't want to say purchased, but like, they cannot collect money or revenue from that animal leaving with its new family, like, on the animal itself. They can collect all the money they want to from the new family purchasing all the supplies associated with it. But yeah, it's not regulating, it's not telling a business that they can't come in, but it is having some regulation as to what they can sell and make money off of, if that makes sense. And I can, let me see if I can pull up the ordinance as well.
While you're doing that, I'll ask my second question. You can chew, your brain can chew on while you're trying to get. I was just curious about taking it up a level, like, you've worked in this field for a long time. I mean, the federal politics, like, why, why would you even have a rule that allowed for six inches of, you know, an animal to just turn around? I mean, is, is this agency captured by some huge industry that, or, I mean, that's like a rule without even, I mean, how could you be less humane than that? I mean, it seems like, why, why would, that's, that's a joke of a rule. So what's going on there?
I agree. And it's, it's standard, the puppy mills or licensed facilities such as this are regulated by the USDA. And those are about the same standards, in some cases or less, than what we require our food to go through. So in, basically, we're requiring the same amount of space for a dog, which is enough to turn around and lay down as we would cattle that are going to slaughter. And so the USDA does not regulate humane ethical care when you're looking at it in that sense. There's also been an issue since 2016. Prior to 2016, the federal government was required to post all findings from facilities that were considered puppy mills and what, what some of the issues were, and they had to report it. Starting in 2016, all of that was removed off of it despite the Animal Welfare Act. And so you can't actually track. And the other issue that has come about as well is that now the USDA does not have to cite when violations are present. They can use it as a teachable moment, rather than citing when violations of the Animal Welfare Act have happened. And so that is one of those things. They are regulated, but to be completely honest, like, the USDA's regulations are not, are not what you and I would consider humane treatment of our pet.
Well, you, your letter says that they're not, it says USDA would no longer making inspection reports readily available to the public. There's no way for pet stores or consumers to know if puppies, if the puppies for sale have come from breeding facilities with serious violations of the Animal Welfare Act. I mean, that sounds like more than just kind of negligence or not lack of attention. It sounds like they're trying to cover up the, they're trying to protect the worst offenders, is what that sounds like.
I mean, I would agree. I think that, you know, the USDA has severely failed to uphold their mandates when regulating this industry, and that it has been left to states and local, local governments to help hold them accountable. And the best way that we can hold them accountable is by making sure that money isn't going back to these places. And one of the ways that we can do that is by regulating the sale of puppies and kittens within Thurston County, since the federal government is not doing it right now. And so the best way to protect consumers in our community is to enact something like this to ensure that they're, you know, receiving, for lack of a better word, a quality pet.
I'm done. Thank you.
Commissioner Edwards, any questions or comments?
Yes. I'm going to just throw a scenario out, and then just tell me how this might affect that particular scenario. So there's a, there's a family that has a perfectly behaved lab that is very laid back and loves the kids and barks if somebody comes in the yard, I guess, but a perfect disposition. And another family has a lab that does the same thing. And so they want to have a baby because, you know, a puppy, I guess. So you can't just have one. So there's a, there's a get together, and we end up with a pregnant lab. And there's interested parties that, hey, we want a, we want one just like that. So they have their puppies, and then, I think it's at about six, six or eight weeks, something like that, you know, we've figured out which families get what, and there's no puppy mill involved. But there's a lot of work, maybe in the course of this, you had to take that, your female dog to a breeder that everybody likes or something that has those kind of traits. Anyway, does this affect that family from perpetually maintaining that same bloodline, I might say, I guess is a good way to put it. So they might need, maybe that family and the, the animal is going to live about 10 years. And so for several generations, they've done this for the family. And would this have an adverse effect on that family working with another family, or even, I guess, with a, I guess you call them breeders, I don't know, where you go something about, maybe it's a duck hunting dog, and it retrieves better than other dogs, I don't know, I guess. So how would this impact that type of an arrangement so that those folks could maintain that bloodline?
This would not affect that arrangement whatsoever, because the scenario that you described is a responsible family who is breeding their dog responsibly. You know, like you said, ensuring, ensuring but bloodlines, finding placement for the pets, even if there is a payment involved for those puppies. That is not prohibiting that family from being able to do that. What it is prohibiting is a store importing animal, importing puppies from out of state through a broker, that is the middleman for the puppy mill industry, importing puppies in from out of state. And to be completely honest, I would say an ordinance like this is beneficial for that family, because they then, you know, it once again is ensuring the bloodline of that golden retriever or that hunting dog, rather than, you know, worrying that a dog, perhaps another lab that came in from a puppy mill could have a potentially contagious disease that ended up next door because it did not have proper veterinary care. Or, you know, la, later in life, perhaps they wanted to add a dog to their family. They could choose to go to another family who is breeding a dog and pick one out. But what it would help with them is they would not, you know, we would be protecting them as a consumer from, you know, purchasing a lab that perhaps has a congenital heart defect, has cancer, has some hip dysplasia. That would be a $5,000 to $10,000 surgery, depending on where you go to fix. And so what it is doing is protecting that family's more, more of their consumer's choice, making sure that the, the dog that they are receiving, or even breeding, is of, you know, health and standard. What it's just keeping is from these dogs that are coming in from puppy mills to come into, what I would say, the population. Most of the time, we end up with those in some fashion. Whereas we don't see, like, the family that you described, we don't see those dogs at our shelter later.
Okay. No, that, that makes perfect sense. I just wanted to thank you very much. That's my only concern.
Sarah, if we're concerned with pet stores bringing in through a broker animals from out of state that are being bred for that, how's that work in reverse? Does this ordinance prevent someone out in the county bringing a bunch of animals and exporting them to another state?
That is an excellent question. There is not language in Olympia's ordinance that prohibits them from selling their dogs or cats out of state. So that would be up to, that would be up to the county on how they would want their ordinance written. But as Olympia's is written, it doesn't affect somebody who is, businesses perhaps, for example, breeding Malinois's out in the county. It does not affect them from selling their Malinois's to PDS or other law enforcement agencies, which perhaps there is a breeder out there that does exactly that.
Malin what?
Malinois's. It's a, they look a little bit like a German Shepherd. They're very commonly, those are the police dogs usually used in law They're very commonly, those are the police dogs usually used in law enforcement. So in most cases, it's not a German Shepherd, even though it looks like it. It's a, it's a Malinois.
We don't care if somebody's breeding, being a good breeder and then exporting. We only care if somebody wanted to, like, start up a puppy mill and...
Correct. We would be concerned, yeah, we would be concerned if that breeder was keeping them in the cages as we showed. They were never leaving. They were being bred constantly. That would ensure, you know, us going out to do perhaps a welfare check to make sure that they are meeting certain standards according to Thurston County ordinance. But that wouldn't stop them if they were a reputable, responsible breeder from doing their business.
Sarah, we're already out of time. I'm turning to Romero. Is there, do we have anything drafted? We probably don't even have a draft ordinance yet, do we?
No, I don't have a draft ordinance for you.
Okay.
And if anything, probably the board will have to consider this next year. But also, as you may recall, there was a lot of conversation related to the, I believe it was the Com Plan Amendment, that one of the items wanted to deal with puppy mills and what type of regulation the board would like to consider. Perhaps this may be an opportunity to have holistic approach as to how the board may want to consider not just the sales and distribution of puppies through, you know, retail in this case, from puppy mills, but perhaps just taking a wider approach as to how the board would like to consider puppy mills and the county as a whole. Because if there is a problem, I don't know, you know, I have to extend of that problem based on what Sarah is, is expressing. You know, I do believe going to the root, root cause of the problem may be something the board may consider.
So thank you, Sarah, for joining us and presenting in question and answer. Thanks, Ty, for your, bringing this also to the, to the board's attention. But we have to end this because we have another meeting with PSC, and they're waiting to get in.
Commissioners, I appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Sarah. Good to see you. Happy holidays.